I'll be in order. Invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we are grateful for all that you have given us and look forward to the end of winter and the season of Lent. Teach us to give up the negative we face in the world today and work to overcome our struggles in the community and our country. We see your amazing touch each day of our life and look forward in your gifts as we move forward. Lord, we ask comfort and healing for those that are sick or grieving. In all that we do, let us put our trust in you that all will be forgiven and all will be protected. We ask in your holy name.
Amen.
We've got an agenda approval of minutes, consider approval of minutes for the February 10th, 2022 planning session, February 10th, 2022 closed session, and February 21st, 2022 regular and closed session.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, only agenda adjustment I had, I do want to bring one topic to you at the end. We need some clarification from counsel about the stage that we were talking about doing at City Lake Park. Counsel needs to vote to prove that, move that forward, if that's what you're wishing. So I want to add that item before the close session.
So moved.
Second, motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to administrative reports, update on Alma Business Center, Mr. Ferris.
Thanks, Mayor. So let me start with, on the update in terms of the city's project management items. City councils, everyone remembers, approved the electric budget on February 7th. All the electric work is being performed or overseen by the city is being fully paid with retained earnings. So there won't be any borrowing on the electric portion of the ABC project. Our crews have completed the electric work to serve the property from the 52 side of the project. And work will begin soon on the Henson Street side by our crews. And then we'll begin seeking contract services for the construction inside that's beyond our capacity. We have held discussions with the water sewer and road contractor, the NJR group, about the coordination of their work as it relates to the city entering the property to install, or our contractors to install the electric. They're aware that these are not under one single manager or site superintendent. So these things will need to be coordinated as the project progresses. Speaking of NJR, it was a pre-construction meeting with them and their subcontractors on February 1st. NJR group several months ago ordered much of the materials and supplies that they're going to need for the project. And they had anticipated potentially being onsite at the end of last week to begin clear cutting. I don't know if that took place on Friday or not, but if it hasn't, it will begin very shortly. And then we will hold regular construction progress meetings with the NJR group. In terms of the sewer easement acquisitions, we have all the easements. This is one of the things, it's also not falling under the umbrella of NJR group that we are coordinating. But all the easements has been secured, though there are some procedural matters left in the easements to finalize. And as the project goes forward, we plan to have a monthly status report or update progress report on the ABC. So that will probably occur once construction by the subcontractor gets, begins in earnest, probably with the April meeting, if not April, then May. And that concludes the update on the ABC, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Next, update on the status of the alleyway project, Mr. Ferris, are you handling that?
Yes, our public works director who's coordinating this project was not able to be here tonight. But just to recap, we solicited bids for the alleyway project. Those bids came in higher than our project estimate, which is not unusual with projects at this time. And just last week, Mr. Holshouser met with the apparent low bidder. The purpose of that was to discuss the bid that did come in, see where costs, but first of all, to make sure the bidder understood the scope, that there were no errors, no corrections, where costs could be cut and money saved, potentially where we could reduce. We will also look at where we could reduce the project in scope, or potentially identify additional funding sources to make it happen as currently scoped. But all those things are in play as they evaluate what some of the possibilities are on that project and anticipate having something recommended to council as a path forward to proceed with the project in the next two or three meetings.
Question? Your miss, calendar is in your agendas, anyone have any questions on that? Moving on to the consent agenda, order number 2218, amending the fiscal year 2022 operating budget, resolution 2207, retirement of the police department K-9 Bali. And that will be, part of that resolution is that will go to the handler, the K-9 will go to the handler.
May of approval of consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Under new business fiscal year 2022 audit contract, Mr. Ferris.
Not sure if you have any questions for our finance director, Jake Weevil, but there's a memorandum in the agenda package and requesting a one-year extension for the reasons stated in the memorandum with our current auditors.
Just, yeah, I do have a question. I'm sure that every municipality and every county is going to go through the same thing that we have done here, okay? But just like I tell not just us, but other organizations, we can't use COVID as an excuse any longer, okay? And we're not using COVID on this one, but we are saying that part of it is the, is the art money. I mean, that money, we're saying that that's part of the issue. I guess I'm just asking since we're, I mean, I know it's the first meeting in March, and this is for the audits that were fiscal year ending June 30th. If we didn't do this, where would we be?
Jake.
Because I'm just, you know, I'm thinking that why are we, I mean, we already know upfront. And I'm sure everybody is in it, but, but why?
So you're asking if we don't go with the contract with Martin Starins?
Right.
We would be in a position where we would have to take our audit bid back out and just see who else, who else we could have come in. I did have a conversation with our, gosh, what is it?
I saw somewhere in there that you'd had a conversation in that where they used to get 11 bids, they only got two.
Yeah, and a lot of people are really struggling with that. So the request was for a one-year extension for this year, considering, you know, we have the ARPA is going to be audited this year and the legal, the debt for our capital leases is going to be audited this year. The challenge operationally with potentially going with new auditors would be having to incorporate them in and get them up to speed on all of our general ledgers and everything. There's just a whole lot of process that goes into that piece. On top of, you know, we're already in budget this year, trying to, you know, potentially build out a stormwater fund for you guys to take a look at. So we would just request to, you know, extend it for just this one year so that we could, you know, focus in other areas.
Well, the ARPA is going to go on for.
Three.
A number.
Yeah, three more at least, maybe four, 26.
If I recall correctly, last time we went out for bids, and it's before you, Jacob, so you may not connect with it. We went out, didn't get it, didn't get three, and had to go back out again. I can understand we're going to struggle to get them again next year, probably if council even approves this.
That is correct, yeah. A lot of auditors are just getting out of auditing for governmental units. You know, ARPA is definitely not a great excuse, but it's increasing complexity and regulations, you know, having to, you know, make sure that we're all compliant. And they're just making the decisions, you know, it's more worth it for them to do it in the, you know, private world to do those audits.
And if I remember correctly, that's what happened with the previous auditor. They would not bid again or did not want to do it another year.
Yes, they politely declined to bid on us citing, you know, the complexity of auditing governmental funds and especially the city as we were, you know, we've been in a state of growth now for quite a while.
And I think part of the Gatsby had a lot to do with that. I mean, that's what had, that was the first problem. So it's the same, but we're talking about a 30%, 33% increase for this one year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think the mayor mentioned the previous auditor declined to even pursue the city's business when their contract was up. I think that makes the last two auditors that have done the same thing. We're talking about complexity.
So this extension is for this next audit year?
For the next audit, the next year to be audited, so the audit this current fiscal year.
Is that how close we normally do it?
That's what I was asking. I mean, this is fiscal year that ends June 30th of 22.
I guess you wouldn't want an auditor a year ago to know we're going to somebody else and then they're doing your audit. So you would customarily finish your prior year before you would do that.
Yeah, I looked at the last time we went out for bids and we did it a little bit later than this, but it was around February, March, I believe, that we got all the bids back in and brought it to the council for a decision.
And this is our first three-year agreement with this current firm, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Counsel, what's your wishes?
I just would say to my fellow council member, remember, the audit firm works for us, okay? They work for us.
Yeah, but this, this late in the ballgame.
I understand, but they do, they, right. They work for us, they report to us, but they are auditing what our, what our employees are doing.
And I would hope that the treasurer would help us out some, try to recruit some people. Because if we can't find anybody to do it, you're going to be limited to one or two people every time.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Must approve.
So must approve the fiscal year 2022 audit contract by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
One against. Number 10, selection of a voting delegate for the 2022 North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference Annual Business Meeting. And first, I ask who plans to attend?
It's a physical meeting this year.
It is a physical, it is.
Twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight.
Of April.
And where is it at?
Wilmington.
I've not seen anything on the agenda.
They said the agenda would be out at our, at our mayor's meeting last week, within the next couple of weeks, is what they said. I don't know if Martha Sue saw anything at her board meeting.
And I had a board meeting the same time Ronnie was at the mayor's meeting. And they were trying to get it done. We should have something, I think, in the next week, at least a rough draft. The voting, however, will be done virtually. Part of the voting will be done virtually, just like it was done last year, so.
Who's going, who's going to attend? Staff needs to know that.
I can let you know tomorrow. I don't know at this point.
Right now, just you and myself, is that it? All that's going right now?
I'll be going.
And Miss Hall. All right, then we need to appoint one of us to do the voting.
Chris.
Mr. Whitley, I think you would do a great job.
Me too, I do too.
I did it last, last time we were.
In real person?
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Hall to appoint Councilmember Whitley as the voting delegate, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
Do we need an alternate?
It did not ask for one, but it probably would be a good thing to do that. All right, I got a motion as second on the floor, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, if you want to do an alternate, we can go ahead and do it, or we can leave it and see what happens later.
Well, I think we go ahead and, you're definitely going?
I'm planning on it.
Well, I'm planning on it, just in case something happens, nominate the mayor to be the alternate.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Hall, that I would be the alternate. Further discussion, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 11, request regarding downtown traffic sidewalk improvements for the visually impaired. Totally agree with the request, but they ever want a state DOT street. So all we can do is ask DOT to consider it because they're not, not our streets.
Is it something that we can then pass on to this, to DOT?
I think our RPO man right there should handle that.
We're having a meeting next week. I already sent Lee an email, but he hasn't responded yet. See if there's like safety money or anything. So, but they usually have to have accidents and stuff to justify it, so.
Well, this is kind of a unique situation, though. I mean, I, I don't know why they would even need, need safe, have to have an accident to do this.
But you're talking at every stoplight?
Well, ones mentioned were basically up Main Street. So I guess you're talking about Main Street all the way through, one, two, three, four, at least five intersections?
I can bring it up, the thing is, if it goes on, unless we could get DOT to do it from safety lines or from some other part of, if it just goes on the S T I list.
Oh, that's not going to do it now. They need to move forward with it and not wait on that. Counsel, in agreement, we let Chris go to RPO with it?
There's comments in here, though, about cracked sidewalks. Is that not our responsibility?
And, Ms. Ferris?
Yeah, we, it's a strange animal, DOT and sidewalks. So we, they do control the right of ways. We usually do the maintenance on their behalf. So anywhere there's a crack where there is a legitimate safety or, or access issue, we'll take care of that. I mean, when you've got sidewalks, you've got concrete in an urban setting, there's some degree of misalignment or cracking that you're going to have. I mean, you've got to pay attention to curbs and other things. And I know there's a different situation here, but we can, you know, look at this email and if there's some specific location, you know, then we can go back and, and see if DOT wants to make those repairs or we can make those repairs as we get through other concrete work.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it was on our radar.
Next will be the agenda adjustment I talked about. This last Saturday morning, some of council, myself, some of staff and some citizens met out at the City Lake Park there at the amphitheater to talk about the stage we had talked about there for a dance, to be able to dance on. Location we kind of agreed on was over towards the wooded area and building it out of cement and then having a fence around it. If that's what council wishes to do, I would entertain a motion to move forward with that. There's no use of staff moving forward, even putting all the time into it unless council is in agreement. You're going to be in some places, you're going to be 18 inches off the ground. You're going to have to put a fence around it to keep somebody from falling off of it.
How big is the stage?
Well, we, we were talking about a 20 by 32 wooden stage that could lay on the cement. Now, you'll have to build 22 by 34 to have room to put a fence on and still do the, the wooden stage, if that's what we decide to do later. Right now, we need to need authority to do the cement and then Ms. Hall can look forward about trying to get that donated.
And I, and I have, and that's part of the folks that came that Saturday morning.
And is there, can we do a majority of the construction in-house? Do we have the ability or capability of doing that?
We can do the cement, I think, Ms. Ferris, you agree with that?
We can do concrete work, I'm just not familiar with the project, other than being told that there was a meeting.
We'll have to have a fence, the fence will have to come from outside, have to be a contractor put the fence up.
So I don't, I mean, I've got questions that, you know, is council, I mean, is there a cost estimate? And are we planning on a budget amendment?
That would be next, but I'm probably trying to have councils even in agreement moving forward first and then we'll get the cost estimate come back. Council's got to tell me if they're in agreement, because right now, there's only a couple that have expressed interest. I don't want to see that all the councils are interested or at least the majority are going to do this.
And this would be, this would be built to accommodate when we have the.
Any of them out there that you wanted to have some work, somebody to dance.
And for any of you that have been there at any of these events in the past 18 months, you will see that a lot of people want to dance and they'll go right up there on that hill, right in front. And that's not a good spot, in that grassy spot right there. And so there have been some folks who have mentioned to me and to Benton about wanting a dance floor, not just a dance spot, but a dance floor. So Benton and I and one, two folks from the community and Ronnie and Lisa met out there, like Ronnie said, Saturday a week ago, the 20 something of February. And it happened to be that one of the folks that I called a citizen has access to wooden dan, wooden floors that people dance on, that we can get for free, that somebody is giving, giving. So all we have to do is pick them up and that's the better thing. If you ask dancers, of any kind of dancers, they would rather have a floor versus the pad, but you need the pad first, so.
So is the motion to move forward to explore the costs and then come back?
The motion is that we have the entrance to move forward so Lisa can look at getting it designed, which is not going to be hard. We found out it will not require an engineer design. And then figuring out the cost and trying to come back with those. I anticipate the fence to be the rather expensive part of it. So we, we will, we'll come back with a price and Michael mentioned, there'll have to be a budget amendment and everything because they're not letting the budget to do it. But I know, we need to know if council is interested in moving forward this before we spend a lot of time.
And move to move the project forward.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Ferris, you can get with your park directors and public works and bring us back something about.
Will do.
Coming around the table, Ms. Ferris, have you anything?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Townsend.
No comment.
Mr. Aldridge.
Yeah, just one thing real quick. I know as, as it starts getting warmer outside, we start doing some paving projects and things like that. I'd just like to ask staff, is there anything that we can do? I've had two calls, as probably all of council has, about the, the section there on North Second Street coming south between Old Salisbury, up behind U R Bank, coming up the hill there. I know we've all heard those complaints. I still get continued on a pretty, pretty much a weekly basis. Tell me, you know, people saying my car got knocked out of a line, it's like riding a roller coaster. I mean, there's all kinds of things that, that you hear. And I know that we don't, we may not can, can take care of all of it right there, but if we could just get, get somebody to look at that one little section to see if we could come up some funds to get that, whether we do it in-house or whether we pay somebody, if we could get that looked at, that'd be great.
I think where we are is the, this fiscal year, we authorized the updated analysis of the streets and their condition. Don't believe that we've come back with the streets to move forward with in the current fiscal year. We're happy.
We have not.
Okay, I didn't think we had. So if, when that comes forward, if Second Street, we can get a cost estimate and then, you know, something will have to give. There's, there's a matter of priorities and funding, but damn, it's all doable.
Yeah. I think you'd have a lion's share of the population that drives that street on a, even a semi-regular basis that would be in favor of doing what we need to do to get that fixed.
We can mix, we could throw that into the mix of what the ideal computer-generated recommendations are based on the condition of life of the street, so we can add that as well.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, brother.
Yes, sir.
Just whenever we have the opportunity, Kevin, I'd love to have an update on where things are for tear downs and burn downs. Very good, thank you very much, because I get hit by a certain group of people all the time about a couple of different places. I did see one over, and what's the street that's right in front of Rosebrier? What's the street there that, that heads back over to Rock covert and all that? Okay, so there is one that's come down on Wiscasset. I don't know if that was on our list or not, but it's one that's down now. And that might have faced one of the side streets, I'm not sure, but it's down. Which brings me to the, the next one, is it Rock Hole, Rock Haven?
Rock Springs.
Rock, down at, that ends up into 73. It's still just a trash nasty, people just continuing to use that. And particularly in that curve, they just throw stuff out all the time. Well, I mean, it's just the street. But there is a lot of, I could tell that there's been some, somebody out there surveying, because I think some survey stakes out there as well, but a lot of trash out there. That's it.
Mr. Whitley, Mr. Dry?
Just anybody that attended a winter wine festival, that really was a great turnout this year. A lot of positives, a lot of people thinking, well, glad it's back on, wasn't sure if it was ever going to happen again. The vendors are always great to work with, they're excited about coming back. And those that were there, hope you had a joyous time.
A follow-up, yeah, and, and the volunteers were great. Had we not had volunteers, it could not have gone over, so that's great. And this past Friday night was the first food truck Friday. And even though there was no entertainment that was posted, there were people and a lot of people. Though it got a bit cool when the sun went down, were probably eight different vendors out there. Probably eight vendors and people everywhere, some people that didn't know that we did that regularly. Lisa's got some postcards that we've got, she and David have been working on the PR for that. And they came up with some postcards that if anyone has got a place of employment that you would like to leave a stack, let, let her know. We've got all kinds of flyers, so we're hoping to really start it off with a bang on April Fool's Day. We'll be the first with a bang. So thanks, Lisa, good job.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, three and six, for to consult with the city attorney and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we go back into regular session. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Coming out of closed session, a closed session was held to do the annual performance evaluation of the city attorney, Burch. There is no action to be taken. Counsel, there has also been discussion about our summer schedule. Several of you told me you wanted to leave it alone. If you leave it alone, we still need to take action on the July 4th meeting to move it, I guess, to the 11th, so we're not meeting on that July 4th week.
So in July, then, would we do two back-to-back or are you?
Now, it's totally up to council, what you're wishing.
You say leave it alone, would you?
Same time.
Or leave the time alone?
Leave the two meetings a month?
Or leave the two.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking. Some of you have asked to leave it just like it was, and I need some input.
So July 4th is on a Monday.
What's your preference, Mr. Towns?
Well, I know we got a lot of activity, I'm fine with leaving it, leaving it alone.
Maybe in, duty calls, maybe in July, since you've got, I mean, if we move the July 4th, usually what we would do would be move it just one day, okay?
Well, no, last year, we, we didn't do it the whole week, we met the next Monday.
Well, but typically, we've only met once during July, so that's what's made it, not during the 4th, because it's usually the second or third weeks of the month. So what I'm saying is usually we go the next day. But, but, but if you just wanted to do, if you moved it out a week, you would have two back-to-back there, unless you didn't move it.
What, what's your wish, counsel? I'm flexible, I can do anything.
What if we only had just one meeting in July?
I'm flexible, that's what council's wishing.
Just have two meetings in June, two in August, just one in July.
I think that's, I like that, that's what I was just proposing.
All right, your, motion, we leave June and August alone and do our own one meeting on July the 11th.
Correct. Same time, same time, same.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Anything else come for council?
Just a reminder, nobody mentioned it, about this Wednesday, the Morgan Hills ribbon cutting at 10 o'clock and the walk-throughs following. It's Wednesday, that, I think it's Wednesday the 9th.
That's right.
Just. Right, and if you've got RSVP, you probably need to RSVP.
It's at 11?
The ribbon cutting, as I understand it from the Chamber of Commerce, is at 10.
And my invitation from Morgan Hills said 11.
That's what I was questioning.
Well, ours, my, ours, each of our invitations from Morgan Hills said 11. But then Chamber of Commerce says that.
Ribbon cutting's at 10.
All right, anything else come for council? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting on March the 21st at 6:30. Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.